We have the Waterloo Community Schools to order, and please join me in a moment of silence. And now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're just going to take a quick minute here for our board members to be seated. Roads are a little slick out there tonight. And now I will read the District Mission Statement. The Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Before we get into the meat of our agenda this evening, you may notice that the seat here to my right is empty. I'd like to send out our sincere apologies to Dr. Jane Lindeman. She lost her mother this weekend. She passed away on Saturday. And so she's not with us this evening because she's with her family. She wishes that she could be here, but I just wanted to let everyone know where she was. She is not, that is, she is indisposed. So, and like I said, all of our sympathies and thoughts and prayers are with her and her family tonight. So the first item on our agenda is an anonymous donation to support the Dallas Brass. It's Item A on Page 1. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude this donation in the amount of $6,000 from an anonymous donor. And I believe that, I'd like to get that motion on the table?
Some move.
And a second? And I believe we have Mr. Fisher and Mrs. Feldman both here from Hoover. And I'm not sure anybody else that would like to speak to this tonight? Okay. Does anybody have any questions? The reason it's on our agenda is because we have a board policy that anything over $2,500 must be approved by the board. So, obviously, it's an anonymous donor, but for anyone who might be watching or listening, we appreciate it and are very grateful. Anything else? With that, then, all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to information from individuals and delegations. And this is the time in our, this is the time in our meeting where those who wish to address the school board may do so. I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red card when your time has expired. And at that time, I will ask that you please conclude your public comments. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. And please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. And finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but in general, this is not a back-and-forth discussion, especially for items that are not on our agenda. But at times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we do have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. So with that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward. Start by stating your name and your home address. Yes. And there should be a little button that says "Push," and if you turn it on, there should be a little green light. Well, then, you're good to go.
My name's Leon Mosley, 99 Mosley Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I am fully for this project with the schools. Unfortunately, I deal with a lot of the other side of the kids going to detention facilities.
Oh, it's supposed to be brighter.
You said it was green.
Do I need to start over, or what?
You were all right. We've got you.
I'm okay.
You're all right.
What was I at? But I deal with a lot of the bad kids. And when you stop and look at the amount of money we're spending on that, as opposed to it could go to help the good kids. Black Hawk County is spending 100, about $105,000 a year. That's just to lock the kids up in Quakerdale and Gremer, whatever these places are now. Because we had a detention facility when I was on the board for 16 years. But, and then, you look at that $105,000 per year for that, and then if you look at the $65 plus a day to be locked up in the jail, that's all. A lot of money. And I'm all for helping the good kids. Because I feel like if you put enough effort on the good kids, pretty soon, the ones over here, this ain't bright. This, we need to join this group. In other words, take a, take a negative and make a positive out of it. And I also think that it's real good because it will help kids, young people, I don't like to call kids, young people get a feel and they can actually touch and do things. Everybody don't deal with the book. You know, I had a hard time at Columbus. I spent a lot of time in detention. But after I got out, I knew one thing. After my dad whooped me and whooped me and whooped me, I know I ain't going for this, so I'm going to work. And been working ever since. But my point to you is, whatever we can do to help save these kids, we, young people, we need to do it. And I think this is the proper, right way to do it, especially when you're talking hands-on. Am I timed up yet?
30 seconds.
I just think that anything I can help you do, and I, I've got, what do you call those things? Boulder ballots I've been handing out to people. Because we cannot afford to lose any more kids. And they need a lot of structure in their life that they're not getting at home. And so unfortunately, the teachers got to be the babysitters. And you have to deal with it. I wouldn't last 10 minutes. I ain't kidding. My daddy would have tore me up.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mosley, for your support of the Career and Technical Education Bond referendum. I also like to add that, you know, we don't like, well, I choose not to categorize children in good or bad categories. However, a lot of studies do show that those young people that are at risk do benefit from vocational tech and technical education. And so it discourages that potential bad behavior, as you say. So hopefully, this bond referendum will allow us to reach those students in the middle, those students on the edge, and just all around. So again, thank you for your support, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Yeah, I have a comment, too. I didn't really realize the extent of what Mr. Mosley is saying until I was preparing for a letter that will hopefully be published in the Courier. But there's a document here, the Consequences of Dropping Out of High School, it's by Northeastern University. This one is a little dated, but there's a couple statements in here. And I've heard these before, but until I really saw the numbers, I didn't, didn't really realize how true. Now, these are national numbers. I don't know how they apply to Waterloo, but I have no reason to believe Waterloo's any different than anywhere else. But one of them was a quote from the Senate President in Illinois, saying, "Dropping out of high school is an apprenticeship to prison." Now, that's kind of shocking comments, but it also, you know, the study showed that one of every 10 male high school dropouts was institutionalized. And the cost of that's about $30,000 a year, I think. So spread over, that's $3,000 a year. The cost is just horrific. And if you just capture it, it appears to me, according to this study and then one after it, that, well, first of all, dropouts, on average, there's exceptions, of course, don't pay their way. They're going to live on public assistance their entire life, on average. At least according to this study. And to the extent that, one way to put it is, the cost to society is about half of what the cost of a year of education is, every year. So in other words, we're paying for these students to be in school. They drop out of school, and we end up paying half of that amount the rest of their lives, 60 more years. So that's the cost. I don't know if that is in the ballpark of what you were thinking, but it's just incredible. And I didn't really realize that until I really dug into the statistics. So I appreciate your comments, and it is all too true.
Thanks, Lyle. Is there anyone further who would like to address the board this evening?
Hi, my name is Amy Weinas. I have a real estate company in town. I'm born and raised in the area. And I have, my company, and I've been contacting realtors, we're in strong support of the Career Center as well. And I think that Waterloo, I mean, I was making phone calls on my way here, that we need to get that out there and vote and be positive. And I was looking, there's a school, I think it's at Durant, is it Durant, Florida? That did this, and it reviolates their entire community. Now, in the real estate business, we're constantly selling people on Waterloo. I love Waterloo. I'm born and raised here. I believe in it. I think we have great things going on in the school district. Everyone's got issues on some level, right? And I know that we're working on them. So I love it. And so when we have people come into the community, the first thing they're looking at is our schools. So we have to improve our schools. We have to provide opportunities. We have to get our dropout rates reduced. We have to do that because strong schools, strong community, strong real estate values. So we want people to want to move to the area, right? We want our real estate values to keep growing and growing and growing. So I'm a huge proponent of it. I've got my office out there working on it, and I just want to thank you guys for all that you guys have done. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Mayer. I live at 230 West Hills Lane. And I just want to speak in support of the Career Center Bond. I'm a 2006 graduate here in Waterloo. I currently work with CBE Companies in Organizational Development. I recently got back from a two-year expat assignment helping to, helping our global expansion at CBE in the Philippines. I want to talk quickly about how I believe the Career Center would have benefited, benefited me when I was in high school. I was, I was not a good student. I struggled with attendance. I struggled with academics. There were a lot of days where I woke up and really had to decide, am I going to go to school today? And there were a lot of days that I didn't. You know, I believe that one reason that attributed to that was I didn't feel a defined sense of purpose. I think had the Career Center been there, I would have had that purpose, and I would have seen the end game. I really questioned, what's, what's the end game? You know, had that been an option, like I said, I would have felt a defined purpose with going to school every day. And that intentional pathway through high school and into, into a career. You know, I believe that the Career Center would provide an environment that fosters highly engaged students with that intentional career path and enabling them the opportunity to either have successful careers post-graduation in a vocation that they have begun training in. You know, I could, I could talk all day as far as what I do at work is as far as highly engaged employees and, and having that sense of purpose, which is more important than what you do or how you do it. We just don't have that kind of time. But, but I think it's really a two-pronged approach, I think, for those folks that maybe the two-year and four-year tertiary education is not for them. It's going to give them real career skills and give them that competitive advantage when they go out to the workforce. At the same time, it's going to give college credit to those folks that do want that, I guess, traditional two-year, four-year tertiary education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? Thank all three of you for your passion. We appreciate hearing it. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, then, is our consent agenda. And this evening, it consists of four items. The minutes of our January 11th, 2016 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings, and a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust. Are there any items which board members would like to have removed?
Item E.
Item E? Anything else? So I need a motion, then, for Items B, C, and D to be approved. And a second? All those in favor, then, of approving those three items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us, then, to Item E on Page 18. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges this donation in the amount of $2,500 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2015-2016 school year. And a second? And discussion?
I just wanted to, again, take this time to thank the RJ McElroy Trust. They are such strong supporters of the district, and they have different drives that they support their funds to, and it's in different schools at all times, and I see this. It's Highland, Irvine, Lowell, Orange, and Central. And I just think they do an awesome job of spreading the wealth around the district and giving money where it's needed and when it's needed. So I just wanted to acknowledge the trust again for their, McElroy Trust, for their support of the district.
Absolutely, and I just want to echo that and say we're very grateful for that. This emergency fund that they help provide money to really does go for all different kinds of things that happen, for activity fees and for clothing and medical expenses. Our kids come to us with lots of needs, and this really does help with that. So we are very grateful to the RJ McElroy Trust. Thanks. Anything further? Then all those in favor of approving the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us, then, to Item F on Page 19, which are board policy changes. And this is a first reading, so this is for information only. And with that, our Director of School and Community Relations, Tara Thomas, would fill us in on the changes here. Thanks.
Thank you, Shanley. The first reading for this board policy change is in reference to the athletic transfer rule in your board packet on Page 21. You can see the only change would be to strike one calendar year and replace it with 90 consecutive school days as the period by which a transfer student would be ineligible.
Tara, what prompted that change from the year to the 90 days?
I don't recall if it was either the state IASB, or there was, do you remember, Angie, were you at that meeting? It was either the state or the High School Athletic Association recommendation. I can't remember which one. I can ask Dr. Barney.
I'm pretty sure it's the state.
Wanted to say that we just weren't doing it because we wanted to. It was.
Correct. Anything further, then, for Tara? So that's the only thing, just in that one paragraph B under Section 4? Yes. Okay.
That's the only change.
Is that, is that consistent within the district or between East and West, too, 90 days?
Should, it would, as far as I read this, it would apply to all of our buildings. It'd be our entire district.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're talking about, you know, school transfer?
Right. I didn't know if we waived that, or we have ability to waive that if we wanted to.
Nope. 90 days.
For varsity, though?
Yep. Okay, anything further for Tara? Thank you. We'll be back in two weeks with this for our final reading, then. Well, we said it was going to be a brief meeting tonight. We are also going to omit the superintendent's report. I know that she will have plenty to report on in two weeks. And with that, I will turn to our board members for information from them, and I can start down here with Lyle.
Okay, just to expand a little bit. The business case for the CTE is, you know, kind of focused on dropouts because that's the clearest return to taxpayers. But it's really there to benefit all students. And, you know, given that only 30% of those that enter a four-year college graduate, they would be much better prepared, I believe, if they experienced some hands-on training at the, at the Career and Technical Education Center. And then, and then there's just the morality of it. It's, we would be irresponsible if we didn't do whatever we could. And that was why this project was started, to reduce the number of dropouts. We had 175 dropouts a year. That's, that's really not right. And so, you know, through all this, the committees have come up with, this is the best way to address that. And so I think it's, it's, you know, beneficial to all students. It's especially beneficial to those that have dropped, are dropping out. But it's also very beneficial to the community. You know, it's just sad that we have a shortage of skilled workers. And at the same time, we have dropouts. All they need is a couple more years, maybe three years of education, and they'll be helping local business and businesses elsewhere fill the skill shortage they need. So it's, it's really pretty simple. The opportunity is so abundant, and so it becomes really, really important to do what we can. You know, say, why, why is the dropout rate for the Waterloo school high? This is the opportunity for the public to respond to the proposal that's designed to improve Waterloo schools. So whenever they say, well, you know, what about Waterloo schools? This is the opportunity for everybody to get behind this. And we have every reason to believe, I'm very confident, this will accomplish all the goals. And just one more comment on the, on the financial aspect. We've got 175 dropouts, as I said. If you look at the cost to society, we only need to reduce that by 16 or 17 for society in, in general, because of the tax burden that the dropouts put on there. If we do 16 or 17, it becomes a tax reduction in total. Not immediate and not a line item of Waterloo schools, but overall becomes a tax reduction. If we improve, as the initial goal is from 75% graduation rate to 85, that's 70 students. So we're several times what we would need. And then, of course, beyond that, even that, even 100 students dropping out really isn't acceptable. So there's opportunity way beyond that. So just hopefully, everybody understands the, you know, the facts around this, and then hopefully supports it. So, that's all.
Thanks, Lyle. I like your business cases. Mike?
I would like to echo Tyler's comments a little bit in, in my statements. Regarding engagement, there are several students that we recognized when we made some travels around the country and to other school districts. In the increased engagement that the students were exhibiting in these types of classrooms, in, in labs where they're, they have hands-on on work, they're engaged in what they're doing, they're interested, they're wanting to come to school. And that's a big part of the dropout issue as well, is when you have a student that gets up in the morning and does want to come to school because they have things to do and places to go and, and a career to build for themselves that, and that engagement gives them that, that drive to attend school and to make something of themselves and to make a career for themselves so that they are not a burden on society, but an advancement for the, those of us in their community. And beyond that, other, other districts in the state, Des Moines of which is one, have demonstrated through the last few years that dropout rate and, and graduation rate can both be improved upon through this type of program. So thank you, Tyler, for your comments, because it really does hit home for, for many people and, and current students as well as, as former students. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Rhonda?
I have too much to say about disconnected students, and I don't want to take up the time to do it here. I'll bring it up next week or next month.
That's fine. You could put it in a white paper and we could read it. You could send it to us. Yeah, that'd be great. Sue?
Well, I just wanted to thank all the people that came to our three town hall meetings. Supporters and non-supporters, it was an opportunity to have your voice heard and your questions answered. And coming out on Tuesday night, Thursday night, and Saturday morning, I just want to thank everyone that did that. And for those that didn't make it and still have questions, just call. I mean, good or bad, call anybody here at the building, and they'll direct you to the right person to answer your question. And I just want to encourage voters to get out and vote next Tuesday. It's a week from tomorrow. The caucuses are Monday, so all those phone calls will end. And then Tuesday will be the vote, and we just appreciate your support. And if you aren't in support of it, that is, you're right also, but we would appreciate it if you would go and support us. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
I just have two comments. One, please go vote yes for, to save our students who get lost in the shuffle, as well as provide our students who excel. So my brother graduated the same year as Tyler, and he struggled when he got to college because he didn't know what he wanted to do. He could have narrowed that down before he got there and saved a couple, me and some other people, a couple extra dollars in college. He went on to get his MBA. So we do produce great, greatness here in Waterloo. And please continue to support us in making sure that we're able to provide those opportunities for our students. The other thing that I want to say is, I'm sorry if I cry, Mike, but I just want to say that Dr. Jane Lindeman, through this whole process, has been amazing at the work that she's doing to make sure that this is happening. And this whole time, her mom has been ill. And so she's been taking time away from what she could have spent with her mom to make sure that this happens. And I know that she probably would be mad I'd said this, but I just want to thank her for caring about our students enough to make sure that that was a priority for her over the time she could have spent with her mom, so.
Thanks, Angie. Well said. Jessie?
Well, I just appreciate all the businesses, communities, all the work they're doing to get the word out, to get the truth out, and work on this initiative. I think it's very promising, like Mosse has said here tonight. And, you know, just a big thanks to everybody who's been involved, all the phone calls, the walking around, getting information out. It's been a very massive effort, and should not go unnoticed.
Thanks, Jessie. And I just want to echo all of that and also say that the vote is on February the 2nd. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which is a little bit shorter than a regular election. A special election does end at 8:00 p.m. But you are also more than welcome to go to the courthouse and vote on the second floor anytime from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. this, this whole week, as well as next Monday and Tuesday. So I do urge you to do that. Our next board meeting will be then on February the 8th. And with seeing no further business, I would entertain a motion.
Did we, did we tell people how they figure out where they go?
I did not.
It's on the?
It's on the website.
Website, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
On the Waterloo Schools.
It's on the waterloocommunitieschools.org website. And you can type in your address, and it will give you your precinct and where you go to vote. So, or certainly, you can call the election office, but yeah, good point. Anywhere you need to go, we'll, we'll let you know, so.
And if you need an absentee ballot, you can pick them up at most any school or here at the district office.
You need to do that by, pretty much by Wednesday, because they need to be returned to you and then remailed back. So you kind of got two more days to get that done. Anything further? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor? Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Meeting adjourned. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Meeting adjourned.